All right. It is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and call this meeting into Greensburg City Council to order. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilperson Reeves is absent tonight, but the rest of the council is present. We have a form and we'll receive a business. First up is approval of tonight's agenda, and we do have one addition to the agenda after it was sent out on Friday, and that is consider an agreement with priority power to use a portion of the industrial park as a staging area for construction materials for the solar project we have coming up. So barring any other additions or modifications to the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the agenda at hand.
So second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda with that one addition. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens comments? Seeing no citizens to provide comments tonight, we will move along to the next item on our agenda, and that is our consent agenda, which includes not just the minutes of our February third meeting and appropriation orders twelve eighty-six, but also a CMB license for the Triangle Radio Club.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. All right. Moving along to our items of business tonight. First up is to consider the project bids for the airport water and septic system.
Last Tuesday was the closing for that advertised bid period for the water and septic project out at the airport, and Chad from Lochner was here, and we had one bidder in person, the other three were submitted ahead of time, and we received four bids for the project. You'll see in the packet the full bid tabulation and then in my memo just the cost bottom line for each of the four. And I got a letter today from Lochner with a recommendation. You'll see that I laid on the table for you. They are recommending the low bid of Kramer Construction at two fifty-two, twenty-seven dollars. They did have some conversation with them after just to make sure that the bids were apples to apples and everything was to spec and it is. So it is recommended that the council would approve the low bid. Just to remind you a little bit of the cost breakout and how we are going to pay for that, we received a KDOT cost share grant in 2022 for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sixty-one thousand has been used already for the electrical line installation, leaving eighty-eight thousand remaining of those grant funds. That was a fifty-fifty match grant. And of course, just like everything, costs for projects have gone up significantly, so the three hundred thousand that we had anticipated would be the project cost for this has gone up quite a bit. So breaking out, in my memo there, you'll see the two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar low bid from Kramer Construction minus the eighty-eight thousand dollar cost share grant leaves a hundred and sixty-four thousand nineteen dollars and fourteen cents city share towards the remainder of this project. Our insurance fund is sitting at five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which the insurance fund has historically kind of been earmarked for airport development. As you'll remember, we recently applied to the Airport Improvement Grant program at a fifteen percent match, so taking out that three hundred and ten thousand dollars should we be awarded, that grant leaves two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars remaining in the insurance fund. So there's enough there to cover the remainder of the cost of this project.
Counsel, questions on any of the bids we received or discussion on potentially awarding one of those contractors the project?
The first time we put this up for bids, it was extremely out of reach for us, wasn't it?
Yes.
What did Lochner alter or change or whatever?
There were a couple of modifications. One in particular was the specs on the well house. Was a fiberglass precast kind of building, and now it's more like a sturdy milk shed. That is one cost savings. And something else, I think it was with the water well itself, it will still have the capability that we need, but it provided some cost savings.
Okay. What? Twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars for a building, meter building?
Yeah.
I hope it's more than a storage shed. What is all the electrical amount to? They got forty, forty-three thousand dollars worth of electrical. I know we've got to have some to the pump and the well.
To the well, yeah. Beyond that, I'd have to get the plans to look at it exactly.
Into the meter building?
Yes, to the meter building. I don't know that there would be any down the line. I think it all has to do with their, at the well house, meter building. There would be some treatment. There's chlorine that would be put in there too.
But I guess that includes the pump itself as well.
Yes.
Which is down hole.
Yes.
Which is down the well. Okay, I'm just curious. I see with our letter that we got from Lochner, they have a local entity that's going to, with.
Correct.
With Kramer's that is going to help.
Yes.
What's their scope of the work, do you know?
I'm not exactly sure what, they're a sub, and I think they'll be doing a good portion of the line installation, the water line and the septic part of it. So they have a well driller that will do the actual well installation and the pump and all of that and the well house. And then I think the local subcontractor is going to do running the water line, the length of the property to the lease that we have currently, and then installation of the septic.
I just wondered, I mean, are they working under, does Kramer have to be bonded with the city?
Yes, yeah.
Are they working under their?
And they're working under them, yeah, as a subcontractor, yeah. We don't do bonds anymore, but they'll have to register as a contractor with the city.
They probably work under their liability insurance and all that.
Right, right.
Re-increase the liability insurance and government bonds that they're using.
Does the grant not require completion bonds or anything like that? Because I know that would be a real requirement, but if it doesn't, it doesn't. I'm just curious.
If they're bonded, it's through that program.
Okay.
Not through us. How is that part of the answer?
Well, and Lochner probably would have went through all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In their qualifications, would they not?
Yeah.
Of all the contractors, is what I'm saying.
Yes, they did follow up and do vetting of all four of these and specifically of Kramer to make sure that they would do a quality job for us.
Well, this is a project we've talked about for a while. It's kind of like the next step, you know, we need to get this done, and we've worked with Lochner for years, and we've got a good working relationship with them. I'd be in favor of their recommendation using Kramer.
Is that a motion?
Could be. Or is anybody else want to weigh in? I don't know.
Money wise, it makes sense on that. Like you said, we've been working on it a long time. We have the options by full of reins back now.
Well, I make a motion that we move forward with Kramer contacting me to deploy the federal bid for the airport.
Third second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid from Kramer for the water and sewer infrastructure project at the airport. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. All right. Moving on to our next agenda item, and that is to consider proposals we've received from a few engineering firms to perform engineering services related to the sidewalk project we've got a grant for.
Yes, as required by the KDOT Transportation Alternatives grant funding, we needed to do an RFQ process for engineering and design and construction management for this connecting sidewalks project. We advertised that and received three responses, BG Consultants, PEC, and Schwab Eaton, and those are all included in the packet. Per the RFQ advertisement, which I included in the packet for you to review, there were seven criteria to grade each of the responses, and you'll see those in my memo and then to score each of the proposals. And I attached that scoring sheet for you. I don't know if you had an opportunity over the weekend before the meeting to look through the proposals and go ahead and do that scoring. But I will say that I think we received three quality proposals. You'll notice that money is not mentioned in there at all. This is not a bid for services or design, anything like that yet. This is really to choose somebody that we want to work with to move forward on this project. So putting the project out to bid, all of those things will come later. This will be for the design and engineering work and then construction management when that time comes.
Counsel, discussion on any of those qualifications we received. Honestly, I think what I would recommend, we probably have some time to do it, is to maybe take some time and digest them and then come back at the next meeting ready to, with a completed scoring chart, and then at that point, we can kind of compile those numbers and see who comes out on top, if that sounds.
I did leave you a copy printed out, so if that's helpful to fill it in, I know sometimes having a piece of paper is nice.
That sounds good, Matt.
And. Have to pull our knowledge of engineering out of the archives and sweep.
And to be fair, I've actually looked through these, and they're all qualified engineering firms. They've done projects like this. I think they would all do a fine job for the city. So, you know, and I know I've been, one of the firms actually, they've contacted me directly just to express their interest, so they're, you know, they're eager to do this all, just a matter of who we feel is the best fit for our city. So counsel, if you're okay with kind of just reviewing the proposals over the next couple of weeks and coming back at the next meeting ready to complete those scoring charts?
And if you'd like, if you want to fill that out and get it back to me, if I could get them all back prior to the next packet going out, I could compile all your responses.
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good deadline to set, is if we could have those returned to Stacy by the Fri-, you know, the Thursday before the meeting.
Yeah, by end of day Thursday before.
That would make it a lot easier and be ready to hit the ground running at that next meeting.
That would be the twenty-seventh, if you wanted prior to that.
Yeah.
Our homework is due February twenty-third.
That I was looking to.
Any further discussion at this meeting on those RFQs from those engineering firms? Carrying none, we'll do our homework for the next couple of weeks and come back and talk about it again next meeting. All right. We will move on to our final item in business, and again, that's to consider that use, that storage agreement with priority power for storage material, for materials related to the solar project out there at the business park.
Yeah, I received this from KPP today, this afternoon in my email, and thought it would be good for you to review it before approving it. It just kind of lays out the location and the purpose and the duration for storing the solar project materials out at the business park. It would be near where the project would be installed. You can see there, they included a map that shows a green area there where they will lay those things down. So this just lays out some terms of them using our property for that storage.
Because that is not part of the location.
No.
That we agreed to let them have to.
No, it's for.
It's right north of the gun club.
Right, it's just north, so.
Where the solar deal is going to be east of the gun club.
Yeah.
I think that's probably the main reason we want to approve it separately, because it's not part of the land already.
Well, and I understand that, and that's why I was asking that. I mean, the area between where the solar deal is going to be and where they're going to store this, if the weather should get, if clement, they tear that area up between where they're storing, do they understand that we want that back the way it was?
Yeah.
Which I'm sure it's in the agreement.
Item D talks about conditioning the site and that the contractor will keep it clean and then is responsible for ensuring materials.
I read that, it just doesn't, just doesn't say that.
It doesn't say, put it, I thought I read something about put it back how you found it.
That's what we do when we rent spots out to people over on the west side.
Yes. And I can ask for.
It's got to say on the backside there underneath termination.
That's probably a given, you know.
Oh, yeah, to restore it. I thought I saw it somewhere, to restore it back to its original condition. Yeah, number, item H, the last sentence there.
I quit reading before I got there, while I did.
I've moved to accept this agreement as presented.
So we need a motion then to.
Yeah. Wayne actually just made it.
Nice second.
They've moved and seconded to approve the storage agreement with priority power. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry? All right, that takes care of our items of business tonight, so we will move on to city staff reports. Stacy?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Attached to my report, you'll see the 2024 wind energy at a station. It certifies that all of our energy in 2024 in Greensburg was renewable energy from the Greensburg Wind Farm. We receive this every year to certify those energy credits. On the seventh of February, two of our Public Works employees went to an asphalt preservation and maintenance class in Great Bend that was put on by the University of Kansas Transportation Center. It was a really good class. They learned a lot and came back with some things that I know can be implemented here. Some of the things included asphalt patching and paving, crack sealing, identifying areas of concern and how best to fix them, and then proper chip sealing techniques. So I think it was a great day, it was a full day class and very beneficial opportunity. We've received our annual Tree City USA designation for 2024, and that is through the Arbor Day Foundation. We annually file a report and receive this by hosting a tree planting event, maintaining our tree canopy through trimming and planting and removing dead trees, and by having an established tree board that meets on a regular basis, which annually is enough to be regular. Just a reminder, the next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, is our annual pet registration, and the Greensburg Vet Clinic is holding a vaccination clinic. People who need to get their pets vaccinated should call to make an appointment. It's usually a very busy day in a small building, but is a good event. This Thursday is the monthly KPP Energy Board meeting that I'll be attending and which it'll talk. And even though yesterday was a President's Day holiday, is one that NISELEES does not observe, and so our trash pickup will still be on Wednesday this week, so if you hear anybody ask, it's Wednesday, not Thursday. That's all I've got.
Questions for Stacy?
Trash was my question.
Tomorrow.
I didn't know if the weather affected whether they.
They didn't last, last week, they still came.
Carrying no other questions, we'll move on to governing body comments.
I have a gentleman, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I know I'm not going to be available until the March seventeenth meeting, I will be out of sale.
Thank you for the advance notice.
That gentleman called me the other day wanting to know if the city had ever considered putting up a camera at a stoplight down the east-westbound. He said he uses that intersection a lot and so many times the light turns green going north or south at about that time a truck flies through. And he said he sees our officer sitting down a block, walking halfway, but he agreed with me that if they're not watching, and it's hard to judge from that distance, if somebody goes through a red light, that he just wanted to know if the city had ever considered that, where it would take a picture of their tag.
Not like a, that would take a picture of their tag or just like a tag reader?
It'd be like what's upon a turnpike.
Traffic infraction.
You don't, you don't stop and.
And it sends you a ticket? And it would send, we could send somebody a ticket then by capturing their information.
Well, but you're going to have to have a, a screen of the light and another camera to take the tag. I don't know how that would work. I just told him I would bring it to the meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point. I know that our officers could probably sit there twenty-four seven and.
And I have to agree with you. He does have a point.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going north or south and the light turns green, you don't just take off.
I believe that those, a camera like that has been looked into in the past, but they're pretty expensive.
I'm sure.
But I can take a look and I could talk with Dennis a little bit about it.
Maybe visit with Dennis, I, you know, a little bit what his thoughts are on it. I understand probably it's not cost a thing.
Yeah. We do have cameras on the incubator, but they're not really for traffic enforcement like that. If there is something that comes through on the highway and we need to go back and look for a vehicle, like, or if there is theft or vandalism or something.
There are more security cameras, aren't there?
Right, as opposed to a traffic camera, which I think is more what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but, and there would be, I just told him I would bring it to the, up to the meeting. I don't, I don't know what all of it entail, but I bet it'd be fairly extensive.
I'm sure there are very specific requirements if they're going to be used as, you know, evidence and a.
If somebody wanted to buy it, sure.
Yeah. But it's, yeah, it's always we're looking into, and we can decide, you know, is the cost justified or, you know, the state of Kansas is going to allow them, so I don't know.
And I, you know, to be honest with you, I've sat there at the co-op getting fuel and watched, and you'd be amazed. How many, in its main trucks, you know, the car can get stopped, but.
Truck is on the front of the fuel line.
Well, through town is where they make up time. I just told him I would bring it up, because they call you back and want to say, well, did you find it? Well, I didn't say anything, so.
Well, I know they've kind of been discussed a little bit just internally, and I think they're pretty pricey, but I, we can have that conversation.
Yeah, visit with Dennis and see what his thoughts are, on what we can do.
Yeah.
I'm not saying look at buying one. Okay. I did my job, I bring it to the councils.
Yeah.
Any other governing body comments tonight? Carrying none, we'll move along. We do have a pair of executive sessions on tonight's agenda, both for discussing matters of non-elected personnel, each ten minutes. First one will be for counsel only.
Make a motion, go into executive session until six thirty-five.
It's been moved and seconded, go into executive session until six thirty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
All right, we are back in open session with no action taken. That brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. So we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks for your time everybody. I'm gonna go start my car before we talk about that.
I'll remote start mine.
Yeah.